Are we ready? I'd like to call the Town Council Work Session to Order Tuesday, January 4th, 2011, and it is 6:40. If we could stand, please, for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just want to inform the audience here that this is a public work session, and if you have questions at the end, we would be glad to entertain your questions. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Alfred. Thank you.
Thank you, Ella. This is the first of three budget work sessions dealing with the capital improvement program. First hearing is tonight. The hearing tonight will deal with the overall financial position of the community, as well as long-term financial programs exclusive of leisure service programs. That would be senior programs, recreation. Those will be considered at tomorrow night's hearing. We'll also be looking at the overall pay-as-you-go capital budget exclusive of the leisure services. Tomorrow evening, we'll do open space recreation senior programming, as well as fair share development fees. On January 13th, at 6:30, we will meet Council and School Committee to review the long-term financial program of the school departments, capital budget, and capital improvement program for the six-year term. So starting out tonight, I have prepared a PowerPoint presentation. My accountant, Mr. Lord, has indicated that with 113 slides that we can't spend more than one minute per slide, but I think that several of them will go much quicker than one minute, so we can go a little bit longer on a couple, but he will be keeping time on me. In starting out, just a little bit of detail. The capital improvement program really has three specific goals. One, to provide a community need statement, and this is contained within my budget message on page one. Secondly, to provide for the development of a prioritization and implementation schedule to meet those community needs that have been identified. And third, to provide for the financial data relative to the community's ability to manage and to finance the cost of those programs once established by the council. This year, I've also included a focus. This is not in the capital program, but I've had several questions on how did we look this year differently than we have in the past at the program. Obviously, based on economic times, we've been as fiscally conservative as always, yet I think we've taken one step further back. We've reviewed all of the capital projects that have been resident to the previously approved capital improvement program, and looked for full justification of each of the projects, as well as the time schedules. On some of the time schedules, we've reallocated time and deferred projects to later years in hopes that the economy will turn around, and there'll be a greater ability for the community to be able to financially manage the costs associated with those programs. Secondly, we've looked to reduce debt service costs by reducing future bonding projects and revising the time schedules on some of the major projects that have been included in prior-year capital improvement programs. Obviously, with the six-year program updated on an annual basis, many projects may stay as many as eight or 10 years before they're finally completed if financing options cannot be resolved. We look certainly for philanthropic grants, state assistance on each project, and look at the property tax support or bonding as the funding source of last resort. We also identify all of the major lead projects. This is different than in prior years. A great deal of discussion has been had over the past few years on the town's use of capital reserve funds. What I've attempted to do in this document is to identify all the different capital reserve funds, to show how money flows into those reserve funds, and looks toward projects that may be completed several years down the line. We're also presenting to you those projects where the municipality was the lead on the project, even if those projects are not going to be paid for with local money. As an illustration, the intermodal facility to be constructed on Main Street will be totally paid for using state and federal dollars. It was a municipal lead project where we had anticipated in the prior years that there would be tax dollars or impact fees used to pay down that cost. We're going to show that project in its entirety as part of the capital improvement program, even though it will have no local cost, because it does meet a specific community need. We're also looking to identify projects that will combine the capital reserve funding, the pay-as-you-go section of the capital budget, in each of the different projects that are identified tonight. We've restructured the capital improvement program to allow for expansion of the road improvement program. This effort has been made to try to minimize any additional property tax supports by delaying some of the other projects that we have looked at in the past where we see that the road improvement program should take a higher priority and require greater funding assistance during the overall six-year term of the capital program. Capital programs, just in terms of a refresher, capital facilities and infrastructure referred to as municipal and school facilities, bridges, streets, roads, water, sewer systems, all of those are the infrastructure that is used to manage the services that the town provides. The objective of the capital improvement program is to ensure that the facilities, as well as the infrastructure necessary to be able to accommodate community needs, are in fact addressed on a timely basis. One of the major concerns a community should have is that if it fails to maintain its buildings, fails to maintain its road networks, sewer or wastewater systems, because the cost of non-maintenance is much higher than the cost of ongoing maintenance. Capital improvements, we also look at as being major, non-recurring, tangible, fixed asset improvements that exceed $10,000. You will see a few items here of $5,000 going through the capital budget, and that's because those are monies being transferred to capital reserve funds for later year funding of a capital improvement. In starting out, if you look at page two, we provide a summary of the adopted 2010-11 and the proposed 2011-2012 combined program for capital improvements. We're looking at a program which would cost $20,935,000. Again, those are not all local dollars. Those are a combination of state dollars, federal dollars, that are coming in, that are programs that are coming through the municipal sector. I do want to also make reference to the fact that because we have identified capital projects that have not been identified in the past that use capital reserve funding, the program looks like expanding by $1,472,000. It is not. In actuality, we've added five projects that have been ongoing projects, but were not identified because of the use of capital reserves, which cost $1,100,000. So that, if we restated the current year budget, those new programs would have to be added to that base. We're also expanding two programs. The Public Works Road Improvement is expanding by $2 million, as I said earlier, and the Municipal Gym Project, which is put in an out year, is up $100,000. To address being able to increase those programs, we're also seeing six project areas in the current year that are being reduced. Those include open space program dollars for future land acquisitions by about $250,000. The intermodal facility is down $105,000. Senior's programming is down $88,000. Land acquisition, $700,000. The town hall is down about $6,000, and the schools program for the six years is down about $400, and the bike paths are down about $80,000. So there's a $1.629 million reduction on the base program, a $2.1 million increase as far as expanded programs, and programs that have just been identified this year that, if they had been identified in the prior year, would have been worth $1 million. So essentially, you're looking at about a $471,000 program expansion if you were comparing a restated 2010-2011 year to the 2011-2012 year that's presented on the slide. The second section of the capital improvement program looks at the first year of the pay-as-you-go portion of the budget, or the capital budget. Within that program, we're looking at a total requirement of $1.9 million. That's up from $1.6 million. $160,000 of that is based on what the school department submitted for their capital budget. I do not think that the $270,000 that's presented will in fact be a bottom-line number that will come as a component of the school committee's budget when it is submitted to us on February 14th. If it still is there, I'm not sure that it'll remain that high by the time the budget is incorporated into the council's budget as far as the transfer of property tax. Without that $160,000 increase, the general fund would be up about $18,000. It's important to note that water and wastewater enterprise funds are up, but none of those take property taxes. Those are all paid for through the user base and the user fees that are charged to each of the principals. As far as the wastewater program is concerned, the $310,000, that is for all regional partners. Again, we're managing on behalf of Narragansett and the university. The town share of that is probably about $180,000. So while it's nice to have comparisons, you have to have qualifications on how those are presented. Overall, the program's up $645,000. Again, if you net it out to $1,001,000, that is in new programs that have been identified but are ongoing programs, we would actually be seeing a decrease in the overall program. Moving on, I'm not going to go through every page of the budget document. I'm just going to hit some of the information that I think are charts that are important. On pages nine and 10 of the capital budget document, if people are following along there, we show the population growth. We're still estimating a population of around 31,409 for the 2010 year. That estimate is based really on two objectives. Starting out with the base from the 2000 year of '27, '21, since that time, there's been 1,721 houses constructed in South Kingstown, or units, housing units that have been constructed. Assuming 1.92 people, which is half of what the family average was in 2000, that would add 3,316 people. We're also looking at the 172 more births over the 10-year period than there were deaths in the community itself. So if you add the 3,316 plus the 172, that's where the estimate comes from. How close that estimate will be, once we see the census figures, which are due out probably in March or April of this year, we'll make the adjustments at that time. All we can do, because it is every 10 years that the federal census is provided, is to be able to provide reasonable estimates as we go forward. The next chart, which is on page 10, looks at what the past 10 years has been as far as residential unit construction within the community. And what you can see here is that in the early years of 2000 through 2005, the number of single-family units that were being constructed was considerably higher than it has been in the past five years. In fact, when we look at the last five years, what we're seeing is that there's been a change in the housing construction type in the community. Most of the units that we're seeing are age 55 or older condominium-type ownerships or duplexes. We're seeing less and less of the residential, single-family homes. Some of that is also, some of it is related to what the demand for housing type is, but there's also the issue of the economy. And the third component is the scarcity of large tracts of land that are available for continued residential development in South Kingstown. Moving on, on page 11, we show a chart of the median family income, housing prices, medium single-family home prices. You can see that in 2005, at the height of the market, houses in South Kingstown were selling for $385,000. That was the average price of a single-family home sold in 2005. State average at that point was 271. With the downturn in the economy and the reduction in the value of homes, we're now at a point where, as of 2010, according to the Warren Report, we are at about an average home value of $300,000, and statewide, it's at 207. So we're still considerably over what the state average is, but we're still not seeing any appreciable increase in the value of real estate within the community. This next chart, which is also on page 11, shows what the median family pricing has been since 2000 from the Warren Group. You can see it was at 157. It escalated incredibly fast through 2003 and up through 2005, and then the erosion began. Will there be an uptick on that? I would certainly hope that there will be, but you can also see with this chart where the average assessments were. The average assessments have been considerably higher. Let me make sure it's clear. Median sale price doesn't mean that it's the median price associated with the property in the town, but only the property that actually sold. The average assessment values here are based on the revaluations that are conducted every three years and provide a more realistic estimate of what the value would be. If there's not a lot of sales going on in the community itself, if some of the lower-priced property is selling, the median price will be down. Obviously, if you have a very high-end sale that's occurring at $2 or $3 million, and you've got only 200 houses being sold over the course of the year, that's going to inflate what the median price higher than what the average. So I just caution, understand that the numbers are two different ways of approaching, and they're based on two separate databases altogether. One of the important things in this chart shows that where have the tax levy been associated with the average assessment value in the community? And as you can see, in the early years, the tax levy per household was escalating at a level of in excess of 5%. It then got down, once the tax cap went into place, to around the 5% level, and over the past two years, based on the economy that we've been dealt with, we have seen levy increases of 1.2% in terms of what the value would be for taxes paid on a house. Another qualification, 2010 shows that the value of a tax levy for a single-family home went down to $4,914. That's an accurate portrayal of what the property taxes were due in 2010 for the house, but because we had the $500 exemption rather than the $6,000 exemption for the motor vehicles, if that house had two motor vehicles within the household itself, they would have picked up about $192 in additional taxes. So for all intents and purposes, the levy amount on an average assessment home with taxes paid for motor vehicle and taxes paid for the house remained about constant. The next chart, which is presented on page 12 of the document, looks at the labor force unemployment rate in South Kingstown. What I did on this chart was to present what the annualized unemployment rate was in South Kingstown since 2000 through 2009. As you can see, in 2009, it was 9.2%. I've updated this chart from what was in the capital budget document, where I now am showing you November, where the capital budget was showing September. In September, it was 9.2%. It's now climbed again back up to 10. That's not unusual. Even with a turn in the economy to the good, the unemployment is going to be lagging. In fact, unemployment can lag behind economic turnaround by 18 to 24 months. The second part of this chart takes the same data, but looks at what the actual employment base is in the community. So what we're looking at there is total employment, and you can see that as we get into the eight and nine year, the employment, the amount of employable people has continued to increase, yet the range between those that are employed and those that are unemployed has gotten wider. There's more people in South Kingstown today looking for work to get off of unemployment than there were two years ago. So we're not out of the woods yet. We may be hearing that, you know, that the market is turning. We may be hearing a lot of things. We may also be looking at a jobless recovery, and a jobless recovery could take several years for us to see the unemployment rates get back into the 4% range, which was an average over the last decade. This is an important chart when we start looking at what's the impact of tax levy increases as we go forward with next year's budget. Next chart is on page 13, and simply looks at the growth in property tax distribution between town and school over the last several years. I received information in today that the state has put out a document indicating that for the 2010-2011 year, as far as tax levy increases, that two communities out of the 39 went to 4.5%, which was the cap level. 14 communities were below the cap level of 4.5%, and 23, I beg your pardon, 14 were above the 4.5, and 23 were below the 4.5. Obviously, South Kingstown was one of those 23. In fact, 34 communities raised their tax levy more than South Kingstown in the 10-11 year. We were number 35. Four communities had tax levy increases of less than the 1.5% that South Kingstown raised. So I think that the levy growth during the current year certainly was indicative of the council's care in terms of trying to limit property tax burden increases based on the economy that we're dealing with. Next chart, which is shown, is, I believe it's also on page 14. Actually, I may not have it in there at all. This is the property tax base, and I think this is important because this shows what the impact of revaluation was. I think the council's well aware of this. What we're looking at is that with a smaller tax base, there's a greater levy increase associated with each of the single-family homes. Average single-family home tax, you can see the change over the past several years. As I had said, in 2011, it may be down $181,000, yet at the same time, the two cars would have been worth about $200 more that they would have paid. So if we had a chart that looked at this plus motor vehicles, and that would be difficult to do, because some houses have, as we found out, three cars or four cars, and others have one car. So if we look just at the house tax here, you can see that there's been a leveling off over the past three years in terms of what is coming out of each household on an assessment-based average. One of the other important things in developing capital improvement program is looking at what the debt per capita is for the community. Our efforts over the past several years have been, as stated earlier, to reduce the debt level within the community as a means of reducing the debt service on an annual basis, which then provides greater flexibility in what's available for tax levy distribution for service purposes. We've gone from a high of $1,428 in 2003, where as of the close of the 10-11 year, the per capita will be around $833,000. And it will continue to decline as we go forward based on the schedule that's been developed. The next chart that I want to look at is on page 22 of the document. Page 22 looks at the municipal budget trends, and what we're looking at here is what's the difference in different components of the budget or our tax program over the past five-year period? And what the chart does is it takes each of the components of the general fund revenue statement and looks at where the increases have been. As you can see, state aid on the first set of boxes is down 10.85% from where it was. We've gone from $4.6 million coming down to $2.1 million in the 10-11 year, but you see that property taxes on average is up by 3.52%. Overall, the average increase in total revenues is about 2.4%. Other highlights, I think, that are important is that when you look at the tax role, tax role is difficult to compare because you're dealing with different assessment periods based on the revaluations. But the market value per capita is an important consideration, and we'll talk about that a little bit later. What we're looking at is that for every person in South Kingstown, there's about $144,000, $145,000 worth of taxable property that supports that person. The next page, page 23, provides additional information relative to the property tax distribution, and you can see that municipal share has gone up about 6% on average, where the school share is 2.8. The real reason that you've got the change there is because this looks at tax levy that goes both toward debt service and toward the transfer to the schools. With a declining debt service requirement for the schools, we have not seen a decline in what the transfer to the school has been, because if you jump down to the municipal expenditure statement, which is the bottom set of that chart, you'll see that the school transfer is up on average at 3% over the past five-year period, even though in the last two years, it's been flat at the $47,909,000. Overall, when we look at the general fund program, it's effectively about a 2.4% increase over where it was in the five-sixth year on a compound basis. Moving on, the next chart, which is on, the detail is on pages 24 and 25, but I wanted to provide, rather than just general numbers, a charting of this. This looks at what the existing debt amortization is for the community. This assumes that if you were not to sell any additional bonds or do any capital projects that required bonding over the next six years, where would the debt level be for the community? As shown here, debt level as of June 30th of 2010 was $30 million. If we didn't sell any of the $11,250,000 that's proposed within this budget document over the next six years, there would only be $10 million in outstanding debt by the time you get to the 16-17 year. That's a reduction, a debt amortization, of about 66% over a seven-year period. Debt amortization, or strong debt retirement amortization, looks at a 10-year 60%. So in seven years, we're exceeding what the benchmark would be for debt. Obviously, a growing community that is maintaining its Obviously, a growing, a growing community that is maintaining its service levels and dealing with infrastructure improvement has got to see additional dollars expended, getting down to the $10 million level, while a nice idea could in fact put the community in peril if they weren't taking care of their facilities over the next six years on programs that need to be, need improvements. So while this chart shows for bond purposes, when we're dealing with bond council or dealing with the bonding agencies, a rapid amortization period, what we really need to look at, which is presented on the next chart and is on page 26, is what's the projected gross bonded debt level as we go forward when we add in the $11,250,000 over the next seven years? Again, you're still seeing a reduction from the 2011 year, which will be at the $26.3 million level, down to 18. So you're adding $11,250,000 to the $26 million, and you're still ending up where you'll be at $18 million. That means that you've still got a debt amortization over that term of about 31 percent, which is exceedingly good and something that rating agencies would be well satisfied with. We're showing here the utility debt. We're not seeing any additional utility debt. We will be seeing newer municipal debt, and we will be seeing another $2.5 million associated with school purpose for bonding over that six-year term. And again, I caution, this capital improvement program is a forecast. It is more a community statement of need and how to address need than it is a budget document. That's why it's updated on an annual basis. Many projects that are listed today may fall off the table or may be put to a later year. And new projects may come forward that need to be incorporated into the schedule next year. But when we look at this as a snapshot in time, this is what we would expect to occur by 2018 based on if this program was implemented dollar-for-dollar in the years in which they're anticipated and with the borrowing at the interest rates that have been projected, which is a 5.5 percent interest rate, which is also exceedingly high in today's market. But again, we can't forecast that we won't see bond interest rates climb to the 6% or 7% range over that five-year period. So we'll use a very conservative number of a 5.5 rather than assuming that we'd be seeing a 4 percent rate as we go forward. The next chart is looking at what are the capital bonding projects for the six-year schedule. And this is presented on page 28 of the capital improvement program. This is an important page. This shows what the adopted program was. And again, I've already spoken to the issue of new programs being added. Here, it's demonstrated where you can see where there's a zero in the adopted program, like the technology, information technology, was shown at zero, it's now shown at 95. In past years, we were still appropriating $10,000 to $20,000 a year for technology improvements, but it was only going through the pay-as-you-go. If it wasn't spent, it went into the capital reserve. Now, what I'm trying to do is to identify for the public how we use the capital reserves to ensure that they understand why we're using it. The major reason that you use capital reserve funding is to be able to appropriate dollars in advance of the project expenditures being necessary so that you will not end up with a capital budget that spikes on a yearly basis. That's a key component to stable budget management, is to ensure that you've got the money on a year-to-year basis available. It also helps us to look at what the depreciation value is on equipment. And we should be putting money in advance to be able to replace during the year that it's being used. Its value decreases. If we put the money aside in that year for what the value reduction was during the year of its use, we would then have the money available to be able to pay for it without having to have substantial capital dollars that take property tax levy away from service levels. So as you can see here, we're going to go through each of those projects. Tonight, we're going to go through all of the projects listed as general municipal programs. Tomorrow night, we'll do the leisure services. And the following week, we'll deal with the school program. I think what's important here is to look at is that we're looking at $11,250,000 or about 53.7 percent of the proposed $20,900,000 program would be paid for through municipal bonds. Of that amount, 6.5 million has already received voter approval. The other 4.7 million would need to go to referendum in November of 2012. The projected general obligation schedule is presented on page 29. And what we're looking at is four programs that would be funded in the 13-14 year for $4.5 million. That would be $1 million toward school facilities, $2 million toward the road improvement program, $1 million for the neighborhood guild, and 500 toward open space land acquisition. Again, if the, if, we'll use an illustration of the open space acquisition. If there was not a need to borrow that money in 13-14, it wouldn't be borrowed. This is based on us anticipating a certain amount of money being expended on a yearly basis and a certain amount of money coming in from real estate conveyance taxes. If three years from now, what we've projected and what we've actually spent or what we've actually taken in in revenue differ, we may be able to delay that type of a project. Neighborhood guild is $1 million, but what we're looking at is that that $1 million would be serviced through trust funds available for the neighborhood guild itself. So it would be without property taxation. The road improvements for the, for road and bridge improvements, that's one that if we accomplish the work that we anticipate in 11-12 and 12-13, we would need the $2 million in the 13-14 year. If that work gets delayed, if there's problems associated with wetlands or permitting requirements, then it may be that the 13-14 year becomes a 14-15 acquisition. We will know that as we go forward and as we do the annual updates on this program. The next chart, which is also on page 29, looks at the bond referendum necessity. In November 2012, we would have $5.1 million in referendum requests before the voters if the program were instituted as presented. The rest of that chart just simply shows the different monies that would be spent based on the referendums that have already been approved. Moving on, we're now going to jump over the projects themselves, and I'm going to stay with the financials. So if you go to page 59 in the budget document itself, that'll take you to the debt service Prior-year bonded debt, again, we've talked about this. If we go back to 2002 through 2011, we're seeing over the nine-year period that's listed there about a 36 percent reduction. So we've made a good effort, even though we're adding debt during that term, we still saw a major reduction from $41 million down to $26 million by the end of the close of this year. And that's presented on page 59. On page 60, we've got a breakout of the capital projects by the program type. As you can see, almost 9 percent is in the open space program, 37 percent in recreation, 31 percent in municipal projects. And we'd be using that $11.25 million that I've already talked about. The projected gross bonded debt level is presented on page 60. And again, we've talked about this already. We'd be down to about $18.44 million, even with the $11,250,000 added over the course of the six-year term. I want to now talk about debt service. We've spent time talking about what the debt level is and what the relationship is to the population and per capita. Now I want to talk about debt service. Debt service is the repayment. It's your mortgage payment as the town that pays and pays down both the principal amount that we owe and the interest that accrues on that principal amount. And what we're looking at is that there are several ways of paying for bond debt service. Third-party revenues are always what we're going to look to first before we look at property taxes. Right now, within the, within the program that we operate, we receive third-party payments from state library construction aid, school building construction, fair share fees, the guild's reinvested income, as I spoke of earlier. Wastewater program pays back where we have wastewater management districts that have been set up, where sewer lines were extended, and the property owners had liens placed against their property and they're paying over a 20-year period to service the debt that the town incurred. We're also using real estate conveyance taxes that are paid based on every property transaction that is at arm's length, that occurs in the community. And we're using reserves that are in the super fund program. All of that detail, as far as how much comes from each of those funding sources, is presented within the statistical pages that are presented on pages 71 through 74. So if you're interested in what the specific dollar amounts are, the third-party revenues are spelled out there. When we show debt service, we show debt service in two manners. First, we show gross debt service. That's the full faith and credit of the community's debt service. That's how much we have to pay on a yearly basis. We show net debt service, which is the gross debt less any of the third-party revenues that I've got listed up on the board at this point. Net debt is what impacts the property tax because that's the funding source of last resort. Once we use all of those third-party monies, the remainder comes out of the tax base. The next chart is on page 64 of the document. On page 64, we're looking at the bonds that will be sold, the $11.25 million. $9.2 million will have to come out of tax base. Third-party revenues that are available will be about $2 million. Again, the rec bond, which is associated with the guild, that $1 million will come out of reinvested income that's held for the guild. And the $1,40,000 is the 40 percent reimbursement that would be anticipated with bonds that were sold subsequent to 2014 based on the legislative changes that occurred in the past session of the General Assembly. Actually, it should be 2013, I think, is it, Al? 2013. So we're not anticipating selling any bonds until the 30 percent reimbursement level has increased to its maximum of 40 percent. So at that point, we would look at the 40 percent on the $2.6 million, of which the state would then be responsible for $1,40,000. They would also be responsible for their share of the interest that would be on that $2.6 million in bonds. When we look forward, we're looking right now that the average assessment home is at $346,000. The tax rate associated with debt is 66 cents, so every house is paying about $230 toward the cost of debt service in the community, net debt service. When you go out to 2016-17, based on the reduction in the debt level, thereby a reduction in the debt service requirements, that'll drop down to about 45 cents or about $66 less. Again, these are not actual numbers that are in stone. They are projections based on the financial information that we have at this time and based on all of the different assumptions that are made in the development of the document. Moving on to page 65. Page 65 forward looks at measures that look at what the community's benchmarks would be, that would be considered with rating agencies, and provide us with some guidance as to what the community's ability to pay debt, debt service, what the level of debt service repayment is that's safe within the overall tax structure. When we look at debt service, what this chart looks at is assuming that there is a 1 percent growth in the property tax levy. And if we could have a 1 percent growth in the property tax levy for the next six years, I think people would be very happy with that. I think that it'll probably be much higher, but I wanted to use a conservative estimation. I wanted to then look at what the debt service would be as a percentage of that, of the overall levy. As you can see, in the 10-11 year, 7.3 cents of each of the dollars that we collect for levy is going toward debt, and we're looking to see that decline to about 4.6. That's the gross. The net dollars, that which comes from property tax would be about 4.3 cents in the 10-11 year and would decline to about 2.8. Again, these are statistical presentations based on assumptions, and they will change on a yearly basis. However, our track record has been that while the numbers may change, they'll change insignificantly, but the trend will be as presented. When we look at bonded debt as a percentage of the tax base, you can see that we're looking at also a decline there. That is presented on page 66. When I look at what Standard &amp; Poor's is looking at, as far as this is concerned, they're looking at below 3 percent as being good. So we're well below that amount. The assessed value per capita, I brought this point up earlier because I showed you what the overall value of the tax role was. This shows you what the overall value is and what it has been over the last several years. This is important because this shows what the impact of the last revaluation was. This also shows why I have grave concerns on the education aid formula because they will still be using the $175,000 value rather than the $144,000 that we're actually collecting at based on the reference years that are anticipated. Even if it's not the 175, it'll be at 173, and it means the potential for less dollars to the community based on them using data which is two years old. Debt per capita, again, from 8.33 down to about 5.14 on the gross and down below $500 in 17-18 when we look at what net debt service is. And that's on page 67. Standard &amp; Poor's looks at less than $2,000 as being moderate and under $500 as being extremely low. So we're certainly closer to low than we are to moderate in terms of the debt per capita. The debt service is a percentage of per capita income, and that's presented on page 68. Standard &amp; Poor's is looking at 2% to 4% as moderate and less than 2% as extremely low. So again, over the term, we'll be very close to the low-margin ranking that Standard &amp; Poor's is looking at, which obviously makes us look very strong financially in terms of our ability to pay any debt that we incur. Debt service is a percentage of operating revenues is presented on page 68. Standard &amp; Poor's is looking at between 2% and 6% as being moderate and 6% to 10% being high. Again, what we're seeing is as the budgets going forward have slowed in terms of growth, and we've actually seen two years of decline in terms of the size of the general fund budget, we're going to see that percentage of debt service to operating revenues will probably stay relatively close to what we've got on this chart here. It could actually, on the gross basis, be in the 4.5 percent range by the time we get to 17. It could actually, on the gross basis, be in the 4.5% range by the time we get to 17 if we continue to see stagnant budget and we do not see an expansion in the services that we provide. This next chart shows what the gross bonded debt service would be. The line across shows what the net debt services or the property taxes that are associated with it. So you can see that property taxes, as a overall share of the debt service requirements on a yearly basis, will continue to decline, and that was an effort that we made so that we can provide greater flexibility in terms of use of tax dollars for services rather than debt. Page 74 in the document shows the projected debt level. Again, what I've tried to do is to take the information which is shown linear in the document and provide it in a, probably, which I hope is a more readable manner in terms of how the money flows, because what we're looking at here isn't the numbers itself, but the way the numbers actually flow from one side of the page to the other. What you don't want to see is debt level, which is going in the opposite direction. There will be years that you will see that when major capital projects require property tax supports are warranted, but at this point, based on the economy, we've tried to minimize what those would be. One of my favorite subjects, undesignedated fund balance, presented on page 70 of the document, and what we're showing here is that as of June 30 of 2010, we had undesignedated fund balance of $9.3 million or 12.7%. I want to make one thing clear when we talk about undesignedated fund balance and the need for it. This chart shows what undesignedated fund balance has been since the 2002 year, and you can see that the amount has gone from a low of around $5 million in 2002 up to a high point in '67 of around $10.5 million, and it's continued to decline from that point. The undesignedated fund balance as a percentage of the general fund has also declined. As I put into the budget document, and I think it's an important statement, is that in October of 2009, the Government Finance Officer Association, GFoa, which really provides guidance for municipal finance accounting, issued a best practices paper entitled "Appropriate Level of Unrestricted Fund Balance in the General Fund." And what in fact they presented as being best practices for general fund, undesignedated fund balance, was two months of budget to be set aside. Two months of a 12-month period is obviously 16.67%. If we looked at that, we would need an undesignedated fund balance of $12,170,000 on a $73 million budget, where we're sitting at 9.2. Based on where we're going in the 10-11 year, if we ended up with a operating surplus of $250,000, we'd be down to about 8.3. One of the other things that I think is important is that there will be projects of a non-recurring nature that we do not want to bond. Those can be set asides from undesignedated fund balance as a means of paying for those projects. Classic illustration is, several years ago, we took $1 million out of undesignedated fund balance to pay down costs associated with Superfund. As we go forward, there are other projects that may come, that should come out of that fund balance. If we're not maintaining the balance, then we're either looking at bonding or delaying projects that are necessary for the community. This is a necessary financial reserve to be set up for a well-managed and healthy financial I want to now jump back to page 40 of the Capital Improvement Program budget, and we're going to look at the long-term municipal project. If you start at the bottom of page 40, it shows the General Municipal Program, Public Works Improvements. Shaki, if you want to come up and help out on here, I could save my voice a bit. What we're looking at here is, we have traditionally provided for a transportation improvement program. The transportation improvement program looks at all of the infrastructure that the community has and needs to maintain or expand upon, and what the capital dollars are necessary to keep those facilities intact. These include road reconstruction, drainage infrastructure, bridges and dam reconstruction and study, as well as sidewalk construction and maintenance of the public works facility. While our public works facility is in good shape, I do want to make sure people are aware that facility was originally constructed in 1975. It's now 35 years in age. We maintain it through the operating program, but there will be improvements, whether it's on the gas metering system or dealing with the salt shed, that are going to be necessary as we go forward. The transportation improvement program is presented on page 40 of the document, I'm sorry, page 41 of the document, which shows the difference in the transportation improvement program proposed for 2012 versus what it was in the 2011 year. We're looking at about a $2 million increase in cost for that program. Where's that money going to be spent? Principally, it's going to be spent on reconstruction of arterial and collector roads. We have, we're looking at increasing the amount of general obligation bonds that'll be necessary for this program from 1.5 million to 3.5 million. We're also looking at, assuming that the environmental response program, which is dealing with TMDLs, is going to cost us in the area of $630,000 over the next six-year period. Again, that's a placeholder. That's going to change on a yearly basis, based on our interactions with DEM and our ability to provide corrective actions that are in accord with what the state, DEM, wants to see us do in terms of dealing with water quality on the five water bodies that have environmental-impacted water qualities. When we deal with the road reconstruction, we're dealing with really a couple of things that I think are important. The first is that we're using a considerable amount of money that came through error funds. These were the $100,000 in the current year, and those will carry over into probably the 11-12 year. That'll be dealing with a section of Matunic Schoolhouse Road. We're looking at reconstructing that road between Green Hill Beach Road and Moonstone. That's phase one. The second phase, which would be in the 11-12 year, would be between Moonstone and Matunic Beach Road. Liberty Lane, we've done a half of that. We'll be doing the other half of that as a part of this budget. And you can see what the conditions are that we're dealing with here. These roads need to be improved. Liberty Lane serves as a major thoroughfare from Route 2 to the industrial district that has a great deal of our industrial jobs in the community. That road needs to be upgraded at this point, based on the heavy traffic that it receives. Again, Matunic Beach Road to Green Hill Beach Road, it'll be a full reclamation of that road with a 2.5-inch binder and a finished course. The projected cost is around $1.6 million. Liberty Lane, again, Fairgrounds Road to Route 2 is phase two that we expect to do, and we expect to get that project done in the summer of 2011. John, jump on on any of these that you need to present information on. The next chart shows all of the different roads. What I did here was to take the chart that's presented on page 42 and 43 and just break out the road detail. So that when we talk about how much money needs to be spent on roads, this talks about the types of roads that will be addressed, both in the current year and through the next six years. It's really a seven-year snapshot as to things that are going to need to see improvements, whether it's the arterial roads or collector roads. Arterial roads are the main highways that are town roads. Those are the Tucker Town Roads, the Matunic Beach Road, Green Hill Beach Road, all of those. And then we have the collector roads that deal with roads like Stony Fort or Fairgrounds or Liberty Lane. These are all roads that are in disrepair. We saw last year what happens when we have frost heaves. Moonstone Beach Road was destroyed. There is no road base on many of the town roads. Many of those roads started out as gravel roads that then received a matting of dust control. That provided a matte surface that was then stone sealed, sand sealed first and then stone sealed, but there's no road base. If we're going to deal with those roads, we can no longer deal with them by putting stone seal on them. What we need to do is to be able to reconstruct those roads, which will assist the community in terms of having a better road system and will hopefully help as far as tourism is concerned and bring economic development opportunities in terms of people wanting to be in South Kingston and being able to tour many of the country roads that we have. The bridge program, I think the bridges and dams, this council recognizes the importance of it. We have rebuilt several dams at this point. We are probably leaders in the state as far as reconstruction. Did this come on the tail end of us losing a dam? Yes, it did, but what we've been able to do now is to have a program which periodically reviews all the bridges and dams in towns, provides us with an engineering summary, and provides us with the basis for developing the six-year program as it relates to bridges and dams. The next slide, which is on page 43 of the document, provides a summary statement, what we're looking at over the next six years. We anticipate total expenses of around $8.2 million, and based on funds that are on hand today within the reserve fund, plus the borrowing of the $3.5 million and about $620,000 a year coming from pay-as-you-go that goes into that reserve fund, we're looking to be able to deal with each of the roads that are presented within that document. Okay, let's move on. Public land reserve is presented on page 44. Public land reserve, we are proposing no funding over the next six years. As council's certainly aware, our last acquisition provided us with a stockpiling of land at Dominic Savio that can be used for, don't go too far because we'll be getting to you soon, that will be used for expansion of municipal services as we go forward. The next project is the South Kingston Public Library, is dealing with Kingston Free Library. And Cheryl, if you want to come up. This project has been identified last year. It's a $300,000 program that will deal really with two components, and those components would be the painting of the Manson roof and the belfry, as well as the reshingling of the belfry. So those two projects are about $300,000. $50,000 pay-as-you-go has come in over the last two years. We've got $152,000 in the reserve fund for library improvements, and Shirley was successful again in obtaining a $100,000 grant. That grant was announced subsequent to the budget document being presented, so we now have the full funding. It shows in the budget document on page 45 as a request. It's now been approved, so the project is online to be able to move forward. Again, we're looking at about $302,000 that will be available with a forecasted cost of $300,000. First phase in 11-12 year would be $80,000 to have the roof replacement on the belfry, and then second year would be Manson roof and the belfry for about $220,000 in the exterior painting. Last time that project was done, I think, was in 2002, was it? And Shirley has been out on a ladder taking pictures, so I made sure that I did put those in. On some of the, on the public documents that we gave out, we were a bit stingy and did not put all of the different slides in, just for the sake of trying to save paper. Anybody who wants Shirley's slides, they are available already on the website, the town's website. The entire 113 slides that I'm providing tonight are on the website, in addition to the 76 that you got before you in the audience. So this is showing the shingles that are worn, the cupping, and some that have actually fallen out, as well as the flashing problems that are associated with the building. Remember, this is the original, one of the original five state court houses, and it takes a great deal of money to maintain a building of that age. Additional pictures on the cupping and where we've got the nail popping through on the roof itself. So again, phase two will be scraping, caulking, painting of the exterior, and replacement of the rod and clavering as necessary. Oh, we got more pictures, Shirley, too.
We also showed his swats last year, just repeated last year's swat, just 50 days ago, the problem.
Okay.
The shingles were some kind of poly, something to extend life. I've been looking at them here, they all look, they've dried, spread, so on and so forth, but...
I don't know, were you afraid of the cedar shingles?
Yeah.
And the vendors that... I mean, it would be a great person if you were to be named after them, to start community society contact, you'd probably have to do that.
I just didn't know if we treated them to extend the life.
I believe, I'm not sure about feeding that, I believe we'll be feeding that.
And what is the average age of a red cedar shingle?
The... Jim, anything that we do has to go through historical preservation, and we'll also be dealing with the painting companies. If there's no other questions, we'll move on. Page 46, property revaluation. Again, use of the reserve fund, there's $752,000 that will be available as of June 30 of 2011. The forecasted price is the $752,000, and that will be done for the mass appraisal that needs to be conducted based on the state requirements, and that'll be for the tax roll for December 31 of 2012. The last one was done as a statistical revaluation, which was conducted for 12/31 of 2009. I know Gene's looking forward to this project going forward, but there are no additional dollars that will be necessary, since the town council agreed both last year and the year prior to take additional dollars into reserve for this project to minimize what property tax requirements would be up through the 2012-2013 year. Moving on, town hall facilities. This is also a moving target. We deal with the town hall based on needs. We come up with different improvements that are necessary. We fund about $10,000 to $15,000 a year into the reserve fund, expenses that are anticipated. We expect over the next six years, we'll probably spend upwards to $300,000. Some of that is the sprinkler system in the basement. That certainly is of interest to us, based on the problems that we had two years ago, three years ago now. Also, the generator is a wish list. Also, the generator is a wish list item at this point, not one that I'm prepared to go forward with, but certainly it would be good to have the generator here rather than having to move operations to one of the buildings that does have a generator. We're also looking at unscheduled work. I think the council's aware, we purchased the property from St. Francis Church. We have the ability to build an additional parking facility. At this point, there's not a need for that expansion. We will have to look at the existing parking lot that needs to be resealed probably within the next few years. But again, pay-as-you-go puts money into this budget. We also fund through the operating budget around fifteen to twenty thousand dollars a year that goes into maintaining this building. Next is the municipal planning reserve. And this is a program where at this point, the capital reserve has about a hundred and nine thousand. Vin, are you out there? And one of the things that Mr. Murray and I have been looking at is the proposal to provide for community surveying. I have provided to the council a document of which I don't have a copy of, which deals with a program known as the National Citizen Survey. And I'm not going to go into a lot of detail on it tonight, I've given the detail to the council. But we think that this type of a survey would be an important thing for the community to become involved in. It would look at both program planning, it'll look at budgeting, it'll look at goal-setting, and it'll look at level of services. As we go forward, there is going to be a need for us to look at what services we're doing that we don't need to do or that we can't afford to do. We think that this will be the first step in terms of looking at what does the community perceive as the service levels that they're getting, as well as are there things that we're not doing that they need more of? So the document, we're providing you with a copy of, I asked Vin if he'd be prepared to talk about how he sees this dovetailing with the comprehensive community plan, as well as as we move forward in terms of being able to use benchmarks as far as performance standards in the community. Vin?
If this survey project would be a nice accomplishment, it would be capable of two thousand and ten census. I think it'll give us credibility to measure performance, to benchmark service quality in the community, evaluate policies, assess community needs, and provide a statistical background for short and long-term strategic plans for the community. This product has been used by about three hundred fifty communities across the country. So one of the things that would be kind of interesting as well is to be to compare South Kingston attitudes to those similar communities across the country. I mean, one of the handouts we gave to the council was a snapshot of the town of East Massachusetts. It goes well beyond traditional areas where you budget and test policies. The idea for the capital budget is to do this on a longitudinal basis, twice during the course of the six-year term of the CFP, senior rat, zero of the top. But you know, as a nation, you have the ability to compare what communities across the country have similar efficiency. It gives us a nice reminder as to how we're doing relative to our competition, so to speak. But I think it would be a great tool for planning, just preparation, for strategic planning, planning, determination of where our assets, constrained assets can go towards service provision. So it should be very interesting. It's considered to be the state-of-the-art quality product out there. The basic model, I think, consists of twelve hundred surveys done on a statistically stratified random basis in the community, which could be covered with up to like four hundred detailed phone interviews, and is professionally non-professionally compared. And, you know, the pricing of this play attracted, given the amount of information that would come back, I think the budget would be nineteen thousand dollars, but I spend it sure on two time frames during the course of the half. It can be very interesting to produce the product, or especially if you look forward concerning this little market.
We've also, you know, we've given you a copy of what some of the sample questions would be that would be used. I've also talked with North Kingston, and they've expressed an interest in reviewing this as well. Because it would be interesting to see whether the levels of service, as well as the satisfaction with service levels, how they compare with comparable communities in Rhode Island. This would give us on a national basis, a review. It would be nice if we could see other Rhode Island communities and what the perception is of what the services are or what the services need to be as we go forward. So I'd like to give the council an opportunity to review those, the types of survey. The other thing that they'll allow us to do is to put four local questions onto the survey itself. So if there's information that we want on a specific topic, we can add that to the survey. We also can have a management report and an executive summary. And if we want, we can also have them come in and do a public presentation on what they've found. Certainly, we're not going to say that they're going to find everything that is wonderful because if we thought that, there would be no need for the survey. But I think what it should do is to give us some guidance as to are there things that we're not seeing and that the general public is quiet on and really hasn't brought to the town's attention that is something that could be serviced. It may have been that if we'd had this type of surveying done, elderly services would have been addressed earlier than it was in the community, or EMS services. So there's those different types of things to say, how are we doing? Are we doing enough? Are we doing too much? And if we're doing too much, what are we doing too much of? And I think that the survey will give us some general ideas. It's not going to give us specific information, but it'll give us general ideas as to what the perception is in the community. The other thing that I had some serious questions on is some of the surveying that we've done in the past for the comprehensive community plan. The questions, I don't know, I'll be kind, I think some of the questions, we're looking for specific answers. And I think that what I want to do is to have it so that we're not putting the questions together, but rather that they're valid questions from a survey point of view that are not leading to a certain answer because that's the answer you want to see. And the other thing that we're looking at is that this would be conducted at two different times. We'd look to do it in the eleven-twelve year, and then we would look to do a second survey to see how well we're doing in terms of adjusting to the things that come through the first survey, I believe, three years later. And that would also assist us in terms of keeping the comprehensive community plan fresh. You know, questions that deal with, is there enough economic development? Is there enough commercial available? Are those different things, are the needs of the public being met? We may assume that they are, but it may be an assumption that's not, that we're not having people walk through the doors, but they will fill out a survey and tell us what they think. So we think this is a valid tool for hopefully enhancing what the services that we are providing and to get a unvonnished look at what the community at large, using a twelve hundred household survey that's random sampled, that will then also look at the demographics of the people that do answer the survey. So it's there, it's not going to take new tax dollars, it will work from, again, reserve funding that's available for planning purposes. But I'd ask the council to take a look at that before we get to the final budget adoption of the capital improvement program and whether this is a worthy new initiative to be considered. Any questions on that? Next is the energy program. As I mentioned earlier, we wanted to identify all of infrastructure improvement activities that are ongoing, rather than just those that we're paying for. So what I asked Vin to do is, since he is responsible for the energy conservation program at this point, he was the last one into the staff meeting that day, the, I asked him to provide a narrative, and you can tell it's Vin's because it goes on for three pages, and I'll ask him now to summarize the use of the federal dollars, the state dollars, and the grant dollars that we have available to us, and how we're moving forward with that in conjunction with the school department. Vin?
With term in the overall program, the energy conservation program, and we're showing in the CIP, as the manager said, generally speaking, involves federal monies and has a pass to the government, the government, the government, so the hour, the power, the government, the investment, and those are the ones that are paying to the town. The program for the energy efficiency and conservation block, which specifically we see, we see the two paths under the program, being a business through the two higher offices. First is called energy performance contracting, which used to be called a shared savings. They might have come from that company, every town uses to contract the energy service contract, called ESCO, and they perform energy works in municipal school buildings and facilities. And they establish a baseline, use the cost of energy for various facilities at order. And then the company then provides a suggested program for savings, they specify various improvements, and per contractual agreement, these are savings with the municipal budget. So they specify savings to be guided through the ESCO program that would guarantee actual installation materials. How the ESCO is typically paid back, the savings derived through the school's program. The town has some history, particularly the school department doing this, and also the KI. More particularly to the municipal side, through the sewer plants that greatly involve this area with ESCO programs. I mean, this particular program that's being discussed here with the capital budget, maybe for the first time ever, the school department and the town work together in this area with enough critical mass to really get these companies interested in entering into the agreement with the town to save energy, reduce some common footprint, and the energy service, obviously, maybe return on investment. Hopefully, it's a win-win, a lot of other communities in the state will improve this now, it's very much encouraged through the Office of Energy Resources and the federal funding, and the energy efficiency block program. We are in the process now, back tomorrow, we're conducting interviews with three short ESCO companies, and then coming to the council organization, eventually to a contractual arrangement through the audience and to negotiate the performance contract. And that will be one coming through the town council, as well as the school community going forward. We have two pools of dollars to assist that and complement that, and that's our performance contracting grant, which is just under nineteen thousand dollars. And secondly, we have what they call a base grant, a base grant allocation, and that is by formula, the town received, as you see, even two hundred and seven, three thousand dollars. And we compete authorities to use those monies in concert with the ESCO program to complement and accelerate those efforts. One of the things we've been looking at recently in terms of initial standards is to do some work on a public facility, PPW offices, your window of question capacity, failures in the area, to have an additional floor. There's also competitive grants that have been made available through our office, Energy Resources. We did, you know, a few months back, we got a grant for solar panel parking lot in the mobile park, and also at the Agus School, the foundation school. We were successful, we made a floor in that area. And the last aspect of this is a partnership the town has entered into with URI Energy Center, the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, three of the RPI communities, city of all, and the county's grant, all products. That's a grant funded through the U.S. EPA, intended to assist communities involving greenhouse gas emissions, reducing the, reducing fuel, reducing energy costs, improving sustainability for the community. Through this program, the University of Rhode Island Energy Federal is to assist the town to help us in the ESCO process, and in developing a strategic plan for the municipality of burning energy. That, they're also looking to provide some energy education training for local residents to assist our community residents in conservation on the board bases. The program will also provide training, facility managers, on energy conservation and provide technical assistance, like the equipment, the technologies, like the use of costs as well. In that grant, which is very due to receive a budget, supporting on fifty-five thousand dollars for a three-year period, and there's no matching requirement for that in-time match. It would be in-time match through town, staff time, there will always be programs that would need our requirements. Recently, I think we signed American, and we have an agreement, destruction is not participation, and that would be a whole one, as the ESCO one, with the university, and to a degree with the other community partners in that program. And that, we also see as a compliment to the overall municipal energy conservation program, and I think the manager also provided a summary of the cost and value of that participatory. There's a fair hundred thousand dollars, generally speaking, of the advocacy of the CIP.
I mean, the key importance to us is that we need to make a commitment toward energy conservation. And this money provides really the foundation for us being able to make building improvements. With the ESCO contract, it should give us a baseline on all of our buildings as to where the best return on investment would be for improvements. Once we get that in place, we've got around three hundred thousand dollars that can be used and leveraged toward doing those improvements in conjunction with the ESCO contractor. Because the ESCO contractor doesn't get paid, but gets paid based on the energy savings. So we can, we can probably leverage that three hundred thousand dollars to a much sizable dollar amount in terms of improvements. But the key is to get the buildings analyzed, come up with what the recommendations are, and then be able to start addressing each of those concerns. So I think the four hundred thousand that's listed here, once the ESCO company is done, we may have several-year new programs that will show energy conservation improvements on different municipal or school buildings as we go forward. So I don't think that this is an end-all. I think this is just the first step. And as we see prices on oil and gas continuing to escalate, we're going to need to do more to be able to be more efficient in our operations.
I also add that this programmatic effort and the analysis done may help us in terms of grant availability, some of the utilities, and frankly, some of the improvements that the ESCO company has formed in cooperation with the town, may lessen the pressure on the capital budget, through direct sponsorship of municipal programs and programs. So I think this will be embellished in the future capital budgets as a, without questioning the specificity of the analysis that's conducted.
Okay, if we can move on, because Alan is telling me I'm falling behind on my schedule, which is usual. The next is information technology program. We are at a point where we need to make new commitments to the information technology program in the town. Computers came into the town after Alan and I, and in the mid-eighties, we got our first computer in South Kingston. And we were word processors, and then they were standalone units that did Excel or Multiplan. And since then, we've cobbled together a network and system. Two weeks ago at the council meeting, you approved rewiring of five of the major buildings in town to be able to do the necessary wiring inside the buildings themselves. We now have to look at the hardware, because some of the hardware that's in place now is well beyond its useful life and is in need of being updated. So what we're looking at is coming up with really the first of a five-year program, and I think this program will expand as we go forward in terms of dealing I think this program will expand as we go forward in terms of dealing with several different aspects. One will be upgrade of the servers that we have in Town Hall that also service each of the outbuildings, whether it's Public Services, the senior program, or the Guild, or interaction with the Police Department. But server visual, virtualization is really nothing more than being able to buy one piece of hardware that can operate three different or four different operating systems and be able to, where in the past, you would have to have a server for each of those different components. What we'll do is become much more efficient, because we won't need to buy as many licenses for the software, and we'll have better maintenance, maintenance controls. Once the, once we upgrade all of the servers, we then need to be able to centralize our record keeping. At this point, each of the departments maintains their own record system on their hard disks within their offices. If they're not properly backed up, there's a potential loss for data. Directory service and an active directory means that everything will go centralized into the servers itself, so that nothing will be maintained as town record, other than through the main computer systems themselves. That way, they are backed up, I believe, every three hours, and they are stored off-site in the cloud as far as all of our records. We need to get to the active directory. At this point, we've moved to a point where we're using the beginning of an active directory. In fact, tonight, what you're seeing on screen is coming not from the computer itself, but from the network, the network at Town Hall. And this network has availability, so that each of the different computers that have access to this part of the server have all of the, all of the budget records. Instead of me having records on my file that I then have to swap with Alan, or I swap with any of the municipal departments, we need to get to the active directory. We then need to bring email in-house. Right now, that's being done through a third party. That means that we can't use many of the services that you want with email in terms of being able to look at John's schedule, so I know when he's available, without having to talk with John, to be able to, to deal with backup of the email records themselves, so that we've got those for, for legal purposes. The second part of the visual, virtualization of the servers is to really get to a point where we'll have redundancy built in, so that if a server goes down, we'll have availability of all the records through the second server itself. We're looking at the archiving of the email, as I noticed. And then what we're looking to do is to get into a voice-over IP, which is really integrating the telephone systems and the computer systems into one, one basic program. That would save us considerable dollars in terms of the number of lines that we have to lease from the, the various providers. It'll also provide us with an ability to mix voicemail and emailing in the same, in the same categories. All of these things are services that will make us more efficient in our operation, and hopefully, if we're more efficient, we can provide better services with less dollars. This is the start. As we go forward, we are also going to have to look at, is the software that we're using the most appropriate software at this point, or are there upgrades that are necessary? Financial management systems in and by themselves could, in fact, cost three to four hundred thousand dollars, with thirty or forty thousand dollars a year in maintenance costs associated with them. We need to build networking base itself, the server base itself, and then be able to look at the software that's going to run on that hardware. It doesn't make a lot of sense for us to look at changing software until we have the infrastructure in place to be able to drive that software and to get it out to each of the users. What used to be a luxury of having a computer on the desk now is old-school. It needs to be upgraded, so that we have access through networks for each of the different computers, centralized record keeping, and archiving of that documentation. So this is a program which, over the past years, we've provided about ten thousand dollars a year, and it was replacing various components. We're now taking a much more systemic review of the system, and this program will probably be expanding in the next few years. But at this point, we're looking at really maintaining status quo until we can get some of the hardware and the wiring completed. If we were going to do our own wiring between buildings, we're talking about another major expense of probably close to two hundred thousand dollars. I don't see that as necessary at this point, but it will be something that we would want hard wiring available with each of the buildings, and not having to use leased lines from the telephone company or the cable companies sometime in the future. That's where the technology system needs to go, and we're starting that over the next five years. You'll see this program expand. That brings us to the public safety program. In the past, public safety was done on a yearly basis. On page fifty-two is the, the chief's description of the three components of the public safety program that's capital service-directed. That is maintenance and upgrade on its computer systems. Second is the communication system that, that public safety manages on behalf of fire services, EMS, and, and police, and then just the, the building and infrastructure reserve. I've broken out the program. We operate with one capital reserve fund for public safety, but there's three components. As I mentioned, the first is the computer systems. What we'll be looking at over the next several years is the replacement of peripherals with, within the, the public safety building, chief documents, the number of units that they have. Many of those units need to be replaced. As with all of our systems, nothing gets replaced unless it needs to be replaced. Somebody can say something has a four-year useful life. If it works six years, it's going to work six years. We can replace the component, but we need the dollars available to be able to do that on a timely basis. Same thing with the communication system. We've just completed the major overhaul of our communication system, and what we're looking at now is the, in eleven-twelve, replacement on the telephone system. That's been in place since the new facility was constructed back in two thousand. And that what there is, is a schedule between two thousand and thirteen and sixteen of specific components of the equipment that will need to be replaced. All of that is documented in detail. It's certainly in summary form in the budget document. This has always been resonant to the pay-as-you-go portion of the capital budget, but we've never shown what the documentation was in terms of what the value with the different reserve fund requirements are. And again, if we didn't have the reserve fund, where we're providing money on a yearly basis, we would have to have spikes in the capital budget when certain expensive components needed to be replaced. Public safety communications, we talked about. Third is the, the building itself. That's a large facility that needs to be maintained. What we're looking at now is, is the incorporation of a new HVAC system in the basement, which is where now all of their servers and computer equipment and communication equipment, core, core infrastructure is being kept. And we also need to replace the chiller, which is for the air conditioning on the, on the main building itself. So we're looking, over that, that term, over the, through two thousand and fourteen, spending about two hundred and, one hundred and twelve thousand dollars. Pay-as-you-go funding will provide about eighty thousand dollars over the term of the six-year period. This is a summary. Right now, we've got about ninety-four thousand dollars held in reserve. In the ten, eleven year, there's another forty-five thousand, and then over the next six years, pay-as-you-go, we'll put about two hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars out. That's on pages fifty-three and fifty-four of the, the document. That then brings us to go into the pay-as-you-go portion of the budget. And if you go to page eighty-eight, and we're in the home stretch. Page eighty-eight starts the road improvement program. We've talked about the six-year program and all of the different components. There's six hundred and ten thousand dollars that's proposed in the capital budget in the, in the eleven-twelve year that'll go into this program. When we look at it, what we're averaging is between six-ten and six hundred and forty thousand dollars a year that goes in. That's the pay-as-you-go component. And again, you'll need the bonding dollars, as well as the dollars that are already held in reserve. What are we looking at doing over the next year? Again, Mattoonik Beach Road, the sidewalks. We still want to complete the sidewalk project from, from the community market down to the crosswalk that takes you into the town beach. That section hasn't been completed. It's been delayed. We need to get an agreement in place with the property owner where the laundromat is located before we can complete that project. We've talked about TMDLs, it's about a hundred thousand dollars in TMDL work that we're looking to reserve this year. We're also looking to eventually deal with Jerry Brown Farm Road, once the issue of road ownership and the right-of-way ownership is completed. And we're also going to be doing a bridge inspection program. Again, same slide, dealing with Mattoonik Schoolhouse, road improvements that are necessary, as well as the sidewalk improvement that would be necessary on Mattoonik Beach Road, TMDLs, and Jerry Brown. We're also looking at the bridge. This is a, a shot of the, the underpinning girders for the Silver Lake, Silver Lake Bridge. We are in a position where during the eleven-twelve year, we need to conduct the next comprehensive inspection on the, on the town's five bridges and the six large diameter culvert that serve as bridges in the community. Once that inspection program is completed, it provides for the brick-and-mortar component for the next six years on dealing with the bridges, the bridges and the, the culverts. We'll also continue to be reviewing the dams that we, they own. The last dam that we're doing major improvements to is the Factory Pond Dam. That work is scheduled for this spring. It'll be done as part of the current year budget within the water fund. Public works equipment that needs to be replaced in the two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve year. We're looking at four pieces of equipment that'll be replaced. One is a, a medium dump truck for a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. The second is the replacement of a roadside flail mowing tractor, a pickup truck, as well as purchasing a piece of add-on equipment for the payloader, which are grapples that can be used for storm damage-related pickups. First is the dump truck. The, it's a nineteen ninety-eight dump truck that needs to be replaced, seventy-five thousand miles. The truck is heavily rusted. I want to say that the mechanics of the highway department do an unbelievable job in maintaining the equipment. They're, at this point, though, even with the painting that's done and the re, and the welding that's done as far as new components being added to these trucks, they need to be replaced on a timely basis. This is a six-wheel dump truck that needs to be replaced, part of the snow routes. It also comes with a, a sander body, so that there's no add-on to this. It's, it's a tilt body that provides for sanding during snow emergencies. Second is the flail mower. Based on personnel cutbacks, where we were operating three machines, we only have personnel to operate two machines. At this point, we're going to replace two machines with, we will potentially replace two machines with one new machine. I say potentially, because the bidding documents will be prepared in such a way that we'll look at what the, the purchase value will be on the old equipment. If it's, if it's too low, we'll keep the, keep one of the two units. We expect that cost to be around eighty-five thousand dollars net of the, the trade-ins that could, could come with the equipment. This is used not only for the roadside mower, but also for maintenance on the superfund sites. Now that those have been rehabbed, we have to maintain the, the grass surface, and those have to be cut on an annual basis. The, the picture that's on the board now is, is the debris management grapples. This is an add-on that will go either with a payloader or the skid steer, so that if we end up with a hurricane condition and we have to deal with debris management, we've got the proper equipment to be able to pick up the material for, for proper disposal. It's an expensive piece of equipment, but it's one that, if we wait until we have the storm, it's too late to buy it. We're also looking at replacement of one pickup truck, one with eighty-five thousand miles on it. We're expecting about a thirty-six thousand dollar price. It also has a dedicated snow and, and sand route. It's necessary for us to be able to, be able to maintain the number of roads that we have in the community. That brings us to the public safety program. If you move to page eighty-three and page eighty, I'm sorry. On page ninety-one of the, the capital budget, we're looking at pay-as-you-go for eighteen thousand dollars. This is, again, as I explained earlier, for replacement of some of the workstations, as well as the, the laptops that are in use in the Police Department. We need to provide an annual transfer to that reserve fund to have adequate dollars available for the replacement, and the replacement will occur on an as-need basis. Public, we're looking at the building, where there'll be fifteen thousand dollars in funding that will be put into the reserve fund, and this, again, will deal with the two items I've already mentioned, the standalone air conditioning unit for the new computer room, as well as dealing with the chiller replacement for one of the roof units for the air conditioning of the, of the building. Third component is the computer system up, oh, it went the wrong way. The computer room, this, these are pictures of the, the new storage room, which now has the servers in it that we need to be able to provide the air conditioning for. Next item is the Harbor Master boat needs the engine replaced at this point. We'll be reviewing this. It has over two thousand hours on the motor at this point, and is beginning to create difficulties in terms of keeping that boat on the water during the summer. Replacement of the engine is around twenty thousand dollars. On the EMS program, I've given you a detail as far as vehicle replacement. We operate with five EMS vehicles. Three of those are online at all times. So you have two ambulances, transport ambulances online, and you have one first responder, four-wheel rig. You also have one backup ambulance, so that if one of those two ambulances that are online go down, that you've got a replacement for, and you have the same with the, with the Tahoe. So you operate with five vehicles, two in reserve and three in active, active duty. What we're looking at is the replacement in the eleven-twelve year of vehicle number one, transport ambulance, in thirteen, fourteen, the, the Tahoe replacement, and then vehicle three, which is another transport out in the fifteen, sixteen year, and then again, starting again, we'll be replacing in sixteen, seventeen, the vehicle that we're purchasing in eleven-twelve. There's about four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars in future funding that'll go through the pay-as-you-go, so that we're not looking at having to appropriate a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in one year when we're buying the equipment. We'll also be, be using the hundred and six thousand dollars that's in the capital reserve for the program. This is the picture of the, the transport ambulance, as well as the first responder vehicle. I'm sure you're familiar with them. As far as the public safety reserve for EMS, again, we operate from two different offices, one in the public services building on, on Route One, and the other within the police station itself. What we need to do is to set money aside on an annual basis to be able to make physical improvements within the workspace that EMS operates in. The conditions within the main building are, let me start out with the south- The conditions within the main building are, let me start out with the South Station. South Station is in the public services building. What we hope to do is to be able to bring them down to the first floor, have them really have retrofitted office space there. Right now, they're working 12-hour shifts. If in the future that needs to expand to 24 hours, we need to make sure that we have facilities available for sleep arrangements, as well as the kitchen facilities. We're looking at $35,000 going into the reserve fund for those improvements that'll be coordinated through John Schach's department. Right now, there's about $31,000 that's available. That is being spent, a portion of that's being spent in the current year, to be able to deal with kitchen facility retrofit in public services. These are the current conditions that exist in the South Station. It's a small room. It needs to be moved. We need to be able to provide shower facilities as well. So what you've got is an office, as well as a sleeping, and a refrigerator, all in one room. It's not adequate for what we're providing based on the work schedules that are necessary. In the North Station, the facility is now, you know, it's operated 24/7, and the building now is 10 years old. So what we're looking at is that there were residential-grade appliances, as well as the cabinetry that was put in. We need to provide a more durable kitchen space within the public safety complex. Moving on, Kingston Library, we've already talked about. I don't think there's any need to go into it. We do need to have one more year of capital reserve funding to be able to get the $300,000 necessary to finish that project. Last three items are the GIS mapping. What that $5,000 is for is for the purchase of the server that's necessary for the GIS program. The last server that we purchased is several years old at this point and needs to be replaced. The technology program, I've already talked about, the pay-as-you-go transfer would be $10,000 into that reserve fund. We've already talked about town hall renovations there. We talked about a $5,000 transfer into that reserve fund so that we can do the work on an as-necessary basis. The chart here is the final summary of the pay-as-you-go capital improvement program. It is presented in detail on pages 102 through 106. And this is the first page and shows you the total proposal of $1,239,000, which is shown on, let's see, page 103. If there's no questions, I want to move on to the water fund. And again, the water fund is started on page 96. There were four projects that were listed. One was the upgrade of the SCADA system. Two were management reports that can be delayed. In fact, that X is in the wrong place. It should be on the 19,000, not the 30,000. The leak detection is necessary. So again, when we start moving the SCADA system, make sure everybody understands what we're talking about. SCADA is the Supervisory Controlled and Data Acquisition System. What this does in the water system is it maintains the pumps, the floats within the stand pipes, so that when water is necessary, based on the stand pipes being exhausted, the pumps automatically turn on, and it's all based on the computerized system that's here. We're looking at about a $27,000 cost. None of this comes through property tax. This is all part of the capital improvement program for the water fund. Water fund is paid for based on third-party revenues and user fees. And we'll deal with the operating budget for the water fund when we put the general municipal budget out in March. Second item is the infrastructure plan. We had anticipated that that would have to be done during the 2011, 2012 year. We now find that we've got approval from the state that it won't be due until 2015, so that will be delayed. The supply management plan, water resource requirement, that also will not be due based on John's earlier submittals till 2015. We submitted them several years ago, and they've just been approved now. So they've said if we've just approved the documents now, the next documents won't be done due till the 2015 year. Again, that'll be incorporated as far as a revision in the water funds program when you see the capital budget for adoption at the end of the month. Leak detection. Leak detection is a program where what we need to do at this point is to purchase equipment that will be able to look at the water system itself and determine where there are, in fact, leaks occurring. To give you an idea, the difference between what we purchase in water to what we sell in water, in other words, what we actually bill for, on the South Shore system, we lose about 13.9% of the water. Some of that's used for fire hydrants, some of that's used for cleaning of the water system, the hydrant cleaning. So it's not all leakage that's occurring, but a certain portion of that is. Proper leak detection, you should have no more than 10% of the water that's unaccounted for. That means that we've got some leaks, whether they're at the curb stops themselves, or whether it's joints within the pressurized pipe system that need to be tightened up. Those are things that need to be determined. On Middle Bridge, we're looking at over 20% of the water that's purchased is lost within that system itself. A lot of that is some of the older curb stops that are there. That water system was installed back in the mid-'70s. 1975, 1976 year is when that system went in. And there are leakage where some of the systems are shut off. There's still water that's getting out of those pipes. The equipment that we would purchase are actually correlators, and what they do is they sit on the valves within the water system itself. So if you put them on two valves that are closest to one another, you can determine whether there's any loss of water between those two points. If there is, then you can identify with the software how close the leak is from one end to the other. That way, they can either dig up, or they can deal with the curb stop replacements. So we need to buy that equipment at this point and the software necessary to be able to do better leak prevention. To give you an idea, with the losses that we have this year, collectively, there's about a 14.6% loss. Probably 6% to 7% would be legitimate loss in terms of hydrant cleaning or hydrant use. The rest of it is really dollars that we're paying for water that we're not being able to bill out for. This year, water loss that was paid for is about $18,000. So if we can come up with an effective system that can cut that down in the $9,000 to $10,000 range, the cost of the $30,000 has a buyback of really about three years. Then the equipment's in place, and it can continue to be used. So I think that this is an important first step in terms of being able to deal with some of the leakage that we have within that system itself. I'm also anticipating that United is in for a rate increase. If they were in for a rate increase, if we continue to do nothing, the cost of water acquisition will go up, and the value of water loss in terms of what customers are going to have to pay for that they're not getting goes up as well. So this is an efficiency move in terms of dealing with this head-on. It'll not, you know, our efforts have already begun. We have borrowed the correlators and the software from another company at this point. We've tried it. We see that it is effective in isolating where the losses are, and we think that we should have that equipment in-house to be able to be used on an ongoing basis. The wastewater program. Wastewater program's looking at expenditure of about $310,000. And I'm going to walk you through those items. But before I do, I want to make sure that people are aware. We operate wastewater treatment facility as a regional facility. The regional partners are South Kingston, Narragansett, and the University. Payment on capital costs are based on how much of each capital component is being used by each of the partners. That's determined based on the flow of materials from each of those partners through each of the different program components. So when we deal with the wastewater treatment plant, 37.2% is South Kingston related, 44% is Narragansett. So 44% of the flow that goes through that plant is from Narragansett customers. Therefore, on a capital basis, they pay 44% of those costs. URI, 18%. On the Silver Lake Pumping Station, again, the distribution is almost 67% of the flow through there is South Kingston. URI's flow is 33%. Conversely, at the pumping station in Kingston, 86, almost 87% would be University. So any improvements we make in Kingston, 87% of that cost is paid for by the University. At Silver Lake, 66% is paid for by South Kingston. Now let's look at the improvements themselves. Infrastructure, telemetry, pumping stations, and the headworks at the treatment plant. First, on the infrastructure of the building, we need to deal with the tire and gravel roof. That's about a $50,000 program. Again, that facility was constructed in '76 and '77. It's been well-maintained and preserved, but the reason that it's well-maintained is because we do spend the money on an annual basis to be able to ensure the envelope is in proper condition. Of that $50,000, $18,640 would be a South Kingston cost. Telemetry, another SCADA system that needs replacement. Projected cost is around $30,000. South Kingston would share about $11,184 on that. Again, the SCADA system at the sewer treatment plant, not only operates the sewer treatment plant, but also works with each of the pumping stations and also intrusion alarms for each of the facilities. It's a major program. It needs to be upgraded at this point. Hopefully, that $30,000 is a high number, because I believe that what we'll be able to do is to upgrade the software rather than to replace it. Local pump station improvements. We're looking at replacing existing sledge grinders at the salt pond and hospital pumping stations. This is all 100% South Kingston cost. So of the $30,000, all of that'll be $30,000. It will be local share paid for by the rate payers within the wastewater system. Silver Lake Pumping Station, we need to add a fourth pump at the facility. That's estimated to cost about $170,000, $113 of which would come from, $114 that would come from South Kingston. We're also looking at improvements that are necessary on the influent headworks and the primary treatment upgrade. Picture here shows some of the corrosive conditions of the, at the influent headworks itself. The concrete is spalding at this point, so we need to repair that and to provide a protective coating over the concrete to preserve it. We're expecting that to be a $30,000 cost, of which we would pay about $11,200. And that's the end of tonight's presentation. If you still want to keep going, we can stop for tomorrow night. Any questions?
Unbelievable. Any questions here at the table? Jim?
Steve, why the fourth pump at Silver Lake? Increase volume at Silver Lake? Why the extra pump, the new pump?
John, can you use the mic, too?
As time marches on, you know, the flow does increase through that pump station for properties in South Kingston that come onto the sewer system in addition to the university is increasing their volume, but primarily it's more for backup purposes. Yep.
Yeah, when we had that storm in March, we had wastewater that came up through the well itself and was up to the upper landing. I mean, we need to be able to have the equipment redundancy there if we end up with those type of emergency situations.
Makes sense. And my last question, what kind of a schedule are the EMS folks on? You mentioned 12-hour shifts. I don't know how many total employees, but four days on, three days off. How does it work to keep everybody healthy and alert?
There's two different work schedules. We have a 24-hour shift that is worked for the people that are on the vehicle that operates 24 hours a day. The other people that operate the 12-hour, obviously, they're operating for 12 hours a day. It's based on a work schedule where they're working approximately, I think, 42 hours every fourth week.
Fourth week.
So I mean, essentially, you've got them working 24 hours, so they'll work two days in a seven-day work period, and it goes on and off that way.
Thank you.
Further questions at the table before we open it to the public? At this time, if we have any questions from the public, if you'd come to the mic. I think this is an indication of your exemplary work, Mr. Alfred.
No, I think I put them all to sleep. No, it's fascinating.
Okay, I would just like to thank you and all of the staff and Alan that supported your presentation tonight. The PowerPoint was outstanding, user-friendly. I know I had some difficulty with figuring out what a grapple was, so I appreciate some of the pictures that you have in here with some of the equipment that the town uses. So at this time, this is the beginning of a process, and we will be back here tomorrow night for part two of our capital improvement plan. And we're also meeting on the January 13th with the school committee. That is our third session for the capital improvement plan. So any final comments before we adjourn? Thank you again. Meeting is adjourned.